Call the roll.
Alderman Lazaro. Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderman Sizmarski.
Here.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Woods.
Here.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
The Clerk Warren. Next, can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting for March 26, 2015?
I make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Next is a report and recommendation, request to extend variation previously granted to the property at 150 Janus Lane. I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Next items to be considered at future meetings, annexation plan, spring/summer, and additional ornamental signage bid, spring/summer. Alderman Roy Wesley.
Where are we on this clock tower for engineering on it? Are they done with it? I'd like to re-bring it back up, possibly for a vote. And in our contract, is it done in phases or is it just one lump sum?
To answer your question, Alderman Wesley, I reached out, obviously, when I started to employment with the city, to our consultants, Eula. Just heard back from them today to set up a meeting because obviously this is a project that I'm not up to speed with. So I reached out to them, just as I have with all our other consultants, and that meeting is scheduled for next week, so.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Could we put it on the agenda to talk about in next committee meeting then?
Yes. Would that be enough time, Pat?
Yes, the meeting's scheduled for, I think it's either Thursday or Friday of next week, so.
Alright, okay. Anything else? Alderman Catalano.
I think we should wait after the whole council is installed.
At least we could get the information.
Well, we should wait. So when we're all up here, then we can make a decision.
Meanwhile.
Right, well, nothing's gonna happen in the two weeks or three week timeframe, so probably is good to have the people up there. I mean, if you wait two weeks or three weeks, is it gonna matter that much?
Well, I don't know how the contract certain. Is it done in phases? Is it? I don't know. Is it one lump sum of $65,000 or are they doing sections? I don't know.
Mr. Cage.
Yeah, I don't know either. That's why the purpose of having the meeting, so yeah, I can't answer that question this time.
It doesn't.
We can get the information for you.
Yeah, that's fine.
Alright.
If it's done in phases, though I would like to bring it up sooner. If it's not, that's fine, I'll wait till.
Okay.
Is that fair?
No, 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 that's fine.
For you, being the chairman, I'll leave it up to you, I mean.
That's fair enough. Anything else? I'll make a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Or adjourned?
Call the Public Health Safety Judicial Committee to order. Let the record show that the same people are present. Need a motion approved of minutes, January 8, 2015.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Chief?
Thank you. Before you tonight, in next year fiscal year budget, we were approved to replace four squad cars total. What we're looking to do is get moving on two of those purchases. One is replacing a 2008 Ford Explorer, which is currently our truck and traffic enforcement unit. And the other one is a 2007 Ford Explorer, which is our current K-9 unit. What we're looking to do is begin the purchasing of this before May 1. Once May 1 rolls around, because we'd like to have the K-9 vehicle set up by August. The backlog at these dealerships with every other municipality starting to order May 1 kinda pushes us back. So we've done this in the past several times before. We're not looking to purchase all four vehicles, just the two vehicles. And then the other two squad cars, we're gonna hold off till later in the fiscal year because we feel we can get some more good mileage out of them before we look to replace them. And you also have a scoring sheet that's the new kinda format that's being done by the Public Works Garage that shows the condition of the vehicles. So we're looking at a total purchase of 50,728.
I'll make that in form of motion.
Second.
You have fifty, you have two numbers, Chief. Sorry. 50,728 and then, oh, that's cheaper, that's $60 cheaper, okay, 50,80.
That's correct. Yeah, Larry Roche was able to beat the competitive bid price.
Don't argue with the chief.
No, I thought maybe it was just a typo on one of them.
Questions? Alderman Jacobs?
This might be more of a question for Matt. How is the scoring system done? I know that's something new to us, how you guys score it. Is there a system? Is there a way you could explain that easily or give us a document on that?
Yes, there's also a memo attached with the packet that explains how the scoring system is put together. Find it real quick, I can walk you through it. Basically, it talks, we have a formula based on miles of service, or months in service, mileage, hours, repair cost, mechanical condition, body condition, interior condition, and equipment condition. So what we do is we take, on that score sheet that you have, like for 86 months of service, that gets you three points. So it's eight, between 86 and I believe 98 is three points. Mileage of 57,000 miles, 10 points would be like zero to 20,000 miles, 20 to 30,000 miles, 30 to 40, 40 to 50, whatever. We have our different mileage points. What the cost is, and then you take your cost, divide it by your repair cost, it gives you a cost percentage. We have that broken down, which gets you points. Number of repair orders, it's kind of a moot information, but that's more of just informational piece. And then mechanical condition, body condition, and interior condition are kind of based upon the mechanics idea of where they are, you know, from 100 percent, or 10 would be a perfect and a zero would be a not, you know, a dud car. So then when you add up all those, it got 34, maximum of 60 points of 34, divided by 60 is 57 percent. So that's how you get. Anything under 50 percent automatically gets put to the front of the list. Anything over 50 percent gets looked at based upon where it falls in, in the criteria of that we have set out of administrative and community development cars, eight years, squads, three years, CSO, seven years, public works pickups, 10 years, dump trucks, 12, and specialty vehicles, 15. So these vehicles, where it did make the 50 percent range, it did score close enough for us to take a look at it. Both of these vehicles are in very poor condition and need to be replaced, so that's why Public Works agrees with the police department that these vehicles didn't even be replaced.
Are you gonna explain that back to him, what he just said, everything now?
Exactly.
Okay.
And does the department had also have a part of this or is this just Public Works and the mechanics that fit to the points?
Well, Public Works and the mechanics do the points. We get these points to Greg, and during the budget discussions, we gave Greg our idea of what all, where all your trucks, or all of his trucks rated. It was, it's a starting point to the discussion. So we did this originally in like December, I think it was, maybe first of January. And we sat down with Greg, he worked on the replacement schedule with us, and then we went ahead and said, you know, these are the vehicles that we think, as Public Works and as the mechanics believe, you know, because they're the ones that are seeing it every day. They had a good kind of a feel of where they're at. So it's not, Public Works is not deciding anything, we are giving a recommendation. The recommendation from Public Works was the same recommendation that Greg came up with. He could see the same thing that we are seeing, we just quantified it into a number.
Okay, thank you for explaining that.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Since we went on the chart, Matt, real quick, I'm looking at the two trucks, one's 2007, the other one's 2008. And you notice the repair cost on the seven versus the eight is almost $4,000 more. I mean, is it just because we had to replace transmission or something extra we gotta do? That's why, because I know we're trying to extend the years, cars. We just wanna make sure, I just wanna make sure we're, you know, not wasting money.
Well, yeah, you also see that the 2007 has twice as many miles on it as the 2008 does. The repair cost of 2008, I mean, really, if you get down to it, to put four new tires on this 2008 Explorer, you know, now you're talking, you're at 76, you know, thou, or $100 instead of $6,500 for repair cost. You know.
Tires and stuff.
Tires, I mean, if he.
Oil changes.
Yeah, yeah, if he needs a new muffler, if he needs, you know, something like that. His repair cost on the, on the 2008, you would see that it's quite a bit less than 2007, which is obvious. I mean, but, and that's why it also got five points instead of the one point. So I mean, if you would, you know, give the other guy five points, that he would have been more like 48, 49 percent instead of 37 percent.
Okay.
Alderman Wesley.
I just have one question, Greg. Is one of the cars we were gonna replace, they're only three years old?
Later in the fiscal year, two of the current squads that are three years old, they'll prob, it'll be probably late 2015 or early 2016 when we look to replace those. Those are the regular patrol squads that are out on duty. This is, the one is the traffic unit that has a lot of engine hours, and of course, the K-9 unit that has a lot of engine hours too.
Alright, thank you. Alderman Woods.
Matt, when you, when you guys grade these, is there some kinda system to grade it or is it just an arbitrarily, I look at it and go, this looks like a five? Is there like, the interior's torn? Does it have to meet some kinda criteria to get a three or a five?
Yeah, like a 10, like I said, it's pristine condition, you know, right off the rack. A zero would be, you know, totally ripped to shreds. I mean, we do have different layers of each of them, like for the interior, you know, rips and tears in the seat upholstery, you know, stain, staining of the carpet, you know, anything that we would, we would try to look at to rate it if it's you know, like if you would do like a Kelley Blue Book, you know, poor, you know, you know, mint, whatever condition, average, average usage. And then for engine condition, some of it is arbitrary, some of those, the conditional ones are somewhat arbitrary. The other ones that are in question, like the, like the repair cost, the hours and mileage and months of service, is if they hit a range, they get those many points automatically. That, there's no, there's no arbitrariness about that one, there's no gray area. If you're at 72 months, you equal a three, or a six, or whatever it is. But yeah, the mechanical and the body condition, the interior condition, and then for like some of the public work stuff, the equipment condition, there are some, there are some ranges in there. I mean, and it's somewhat based upon the mechanics view of them versus other cars in the fleet as well. So there's a little bit of gray area in there, but they try to. Bob has been actually doing this for a number of years. And when I introduced this, introduced this project to him, I said, this is what I want you to do, and these are the things I want you to rate them on. He turned around and goes, is this what you want? And showed it to me. I mean, so he is already doing this, and so he's got, been doing it for about the last 10 years, just no one really knew that he was doing. So he's been keeping a pretty good track of what the conditions are and, you know, and is seeing a four versus an eight versus a seven. You know, he can kinda, he has a pretty good feel of that.
And is there any relevance to that vehicle's ability to be used? So if we say there's a rip in the seat, and there's some marks on the door panel, and maybe little, one of the little dial clusters has got a crack in it, I mean, that really doesn't have any bearing on the vehicle to function. Just viewing it from a cost-saving standpoint, I don't wanna be, I appreciate everything that you're doing and understand it. I just don't want it to be, sometimes when we compare it, and if we have a newer fleet, well, then a three-year-old car looks bad when you got 14 shiny new trucks out there.
Yeah.
And we rotate our, and we're pretty good with our equipment rotating it. And as you know, the push has been to try to, you know, squeeze at least another year out of it, so.
Yeah, and that's why, and that's why we really looked at establishing a protocol for years of service as kind of the jumping off point. Three years, three years doesn't seem like a lot, but when you're putting 75,000 miles on a vehicle in three years, you're gonna see the increase in repair costs are gonna start to mount up. If you notice these two things, even the 2007 Ford Explorer, it's got a 37 percent rating, but it got a 70 for body condition, it got a 70 for interior condition. So we're not saying that because it's, you know, eight years old, and it's got a little nick here, a little scratch there, you know, some salt stains in the car because it doesn't get vacuumed out during the, during the wintertime very often. That's not, that's not leading to, that's not the leading push to getting these vehicles scored as low as they are. You know, the 123,000 miles, that, you know, out of 60 points and you get zero out of that, that's gonna take you, you know, pretty low pretty quick when you just get average points for the rest of them. So we're still using months of service and mileage are really the two, and repair costs, those are the three things that really drive whether or not we need to keep a vehicle or not. And we, I think we've worked pretty good together about, you know, if the 409 Ford Explorer would've came in at 72 percent, and Greg would've said, no, we need to get rid of it because it's eight years and that's when we get rid of it, me and him would've had a nice discussion about what we could use it for. Or can we use it for something else within, within the entire fleet? Maybe it doesn't, doesn't meet up for a, for a traffic control vehicle anymore, but maybe would help out Ed in his department. Or maybe we would use it as a emergency vehicle, I mean, since it's an Explorer for, during the wintertime or flooding situations or something like that. So it's not like we're getting rid of vehicles just because we wanna get rid of vehicles. We are really taking a hard stance at, this is when, this is when we think they should go, and this is when they should go. They're not, they're not the same. They're not just, just because they hit seven years doesn't mean they automatically go to the front of the list and they get on their, get on the board.
One quick final question. How do you calculate the repair costs?
It's total repair costs, non, total repair costs without using staff time. Staff time, labor hours are not included in there. So that's parts, material, also any outsourcing that we would've had to done with it.
Why would we not try to calculate staff time?
That's something that has never been done before here. I'm looking at ways to do that. And to do that, we would have to make some modifications to make sure that we get the right information in there as we add. Because once we start adding hours in, some of these vehicles are gonna go, you know, springboard to the top where they shouldn't be because the other ones don't have that type of information. So it's something that's being looked into. It's just something that's never been tracked before. It's, it's being tracked within the computer system, but we don't add monetary value to it.
Aren't you running CFA program?
Yes, we are.
There is a document under to keep track of hours.
I understand that, it just hasn't been used as part of the repair cost calculation.
So we're not using the full program?
It was never done that way.
I'd like to start. I don't know, it would probably be under Public Works.
If I could just touch real quick too, because seeing even when the old paper sheets came across, to take it out of, let's say, the PD budget for repair cost, it would just list the parts numbers, so I don't know how that system works, but I know.
But my point is, when you repair something, it goes across with the vehicles. I mean, when we repair a lawnmower at the Forest Preserve or any piece of equipment, it has a number, has how many hours a mechanic spends on it. Every part that goes into it, oil change, whatever. Then you know the true cost of it.
Yeah, well, I guess, I guess the biggest.
But that's another subject to talk about. I mean, we're getting off the subject here.
The biggest question with that is, do you use hours as your, as your calculator, or do you use dollars? And is dollars, dollars is not just dollars of their per hour cost. There's usually a labor rate involved, and sometimes people get upset about labor rates. The garage is $100 an hour, $85 an hour, $130 an hour. So those are some issues that, it's probably good for a discussion, and if we wanna do it that way, then we could come up with a couple of different options in the future.
I would at least, I would at least like to see the hours.
We could probably.
It doesn't have to be dollars. Okay. Any other questions on vehicles? Okay, I got a motion, I got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion, uh, any opposed? Motion carries. Anything else for future meetings? Need a motion for, make a motion to adjourn?
The move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to call the order of the Public Works Committee. I'm gonna take a, please take note, the same council members are present. I need a motion to approve minutes, the regular meeting of March 26, 2015. It's my motion.
So move.
Any corrections? No corrections?
Eh.
Alright. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carries. Report of recommendation, approval of partial payment request, number 16, to Williams Brother Construction for the Phase 1B Northwest Water Treatment Plant, not in the amount, not to exceed a $557,287.33. That's my motion.
Second.
Any questions?
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Motion carries. Next is approve of design of contract with H.R. Green for landscaping at Veterans Park at the Northwest Water Treatment Plant, not in the amount to exceed of $19,800. That is my motion.
Second.
Any questions? Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Matt, could you, is that counting that detention basin there too? In the design, and the sprinkler system and ambulances, and the lights? It seems a little low to Matt.
Go ahead.
Okay. It does include the basin. Unless we have to do earthwork modifications to the basin, because the basin was approved by the Army Corps of Engineers. So if we would do earthwork modifications to the basin to change the levels, we would have to go back to the Army Corps and get everything re-approved, and to be honest, that's gonna be a pain. So that's not included. Now, to pretty up the basin is included in that. Irrigation is included. The lighting is not included. Now, with the lighting, there are gonna be some things that the lighting design, the lighting design will be included, but if we wanna do, you know, lumens, you know, lumen tests and stuff like that, none of that will be included in it. I think pretty much what we're gonna wanna do is just illuminate the medallions if they're on the wall, and then do some spot illuminations throughout the area. We should be able to take care of that within the design. But like a huge, if we wanna, you know, lighten it up like a baseball field or something, that's not included in this design.
Go ahead.
Is this really, is this, are they gonna make the contract by not going out for bid for one landscape, another landscaper that we can merge in with the other contract that we got going on, or not?
Go ahead.
We're not exactly sure how the end product is going to be, and how we're gonna do the end product. Kinda like to see what the design is, and in discussions, we've, we've come up with a couple of different ideas, whether or not we just get rid of the landscaping portion of it, out of the current budget, and just go out for one grandiose landscaping budget and rebid it, including both parts. If we do do that, and we take the large portion out of the contract budget, obviously, we would have a change order to reduce the cost of the treatment plant budget, rehabilitation budget. But we would not be able to reutilize that funds that we reduce through the IEPA grant because that'll just be way too much work to do that. So once we get this final design in, and we see what the dollar figure comes out at, if that's something that the council can absorb, can ask the city to absorb, and then a single cost, and take it out of that once we can do a single project together. Or we work with the, or the other option is to work with the current landscaper and see what kind of price he would give us to do the whole thing, waive competitive bids, and just go with that person. So we have two options, we're kind of got a couple of different ways to go. But we'd like to see kinda how much, kinda how much this is gonna cost before we go down either one of those two paths.
Alderman Sizmarski.
Yeah, Matt, I'd like to see, see you get a price amount on the finished product medallions versus the plain medallions. If it's cheaper, then I'd like to see one of our residents in town paint those signs. He's done the, if you wanna see his work, he's done the Veterans Building downtown Chicago, he's done work in City of Benson Hill. If it's a significant savings, we should have one of our residents do it.
Alderman Jacob?
Just a couple of questions, Matt. Number one, it says it's not going out to bid until September, and it's gonna be completed by November 3. Not being a landscaper, is that a good time to be putting in landscaping at the end of the summer, end of the season like that?
Go ahead.
Yeah, the only, the options that we would have would be to get it out to bid before we finalize a design. Because we can't, we can't really plan anything in July and August. So really, our only option is to wait until September, or to wait until next spring to do it. If we get everything in by, you know, the first of November, we should have a good spring. You know, that should look good in the spring. And we don't wanna elongate this project out anymore than it already is. We've already now, with this portion of the project, we've already added an extra three months, four months to the project. So we should be okay.
Go ahead.
And then with the, they touched upon a little bit of the lighting and emblem. Since that's not designed, being designed in this, is that gonna push this project back at all or no?
It shouldn't, just because the lighting of the medallions especially, isn't gonna be that great a detail. It'll basically just be picking out a structure. We may, even as Public Works, may be able to run the conduit, run the wires to it, and just have an electrician come in and install it. So that shouldn't, shouldn't be that big of a deal. Like I said, if we wanted to, you know, put big lighting structures up and, you know, be able to illuminate the whole entire front part, you know, the original thought was to put the lights on the south side of the basin and have it shine across the basin to the medallions. And H.R. Green really said, no, what you wanna do is just do like an arm, fold-over arm type thing that would not go in front of it, but illuminate down on that medallion. So something like that really shouldn't, shouldn't change things too much and shouldn't, it will not increase the duration of this project.
Go ahead, Peter.
A final question. I just wanna make sure that once they do the landscaping and stuff, we don't have to dig it up to put. to dig it up to put electrical in. So, that's all gonna be thought of prior to putting sod or whatever they're doing down?
Yeah, and just because, we're talking about electrical, there's a difference between doing electrical lighting plan and being able just to put the conduit in for the electric. So, yeah, we're not going to do something and then tear it up to do something else. I mean, I hope that we never do that for any project, but obviously, this is gonna be a project that we're gonna systematically go through and do it the right way.
And also, they're gonna show us a design how it's gonna look?
Yeah, yeah. The, the plan of attack for this project is, I believe it's in here on page fifty-nine of your packet, but we approve the contract at the next meeting. We'll have a kickoff meeting immediately thereafter, maybe not the seventeenth, but that next week of April. Preliminary design will come back right around the twentieth. Streetscape Committee will then get their opportunity to take a look at the preliminary design. Also, the next, the next step would be to bring that preliminary design to council, either redlined with Streetscape opinion, or, you know, redrawn up depending on how much time we have to do that. We'll have final design by July ninth. At that time, we'll bring it forward to the committee again, or to council, and say, this is where, this is where our final design is, it's time to go to bid, everybody on board, everybody good to go? We'll go out to bid, open bids in August, award it to committee, and in September, and then get them going immediately, and they have a forty-four-day working period. So, we'll be done before Veterans Day and whatever events will be at Veterans Day.
Have we looked into any corporate sponsorship with this project?
We have not. I have not.
Maybe we should look into that?
I'm just looking at getting the project done.
Eugene. Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Timeline there, I'm looking at, treatment plan's supposed to be done, I just don't want to see it dug up again. I, I thought our goal was to have this done as, as the treatment plan is completed, and we don't have to dig up that site again. I mean, now, now I'm looking at the deadline as we-
Yeah, but it's only the front.
Right. But still, the park, new parking lot will be in there and all that, that's-
Yeah, basically, with, with the treatment plan, if we, if we, whatever we do, it'll just be like grass, or seed, dirt, and stuff. We're not gonna do any finishing touches to it until this project gets going, finish it all at that time.
Any more questions? Roll call.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Motion carries. Next is to enter into a contract with Martin Construction for the Ward Two, Phase Two, capital improvement, not in the amount to exceed one million, eight hundred and seventy-three thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars. That is my motion.
Second.
Any questions? Roll call.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
And items to be considered for future meetings? Anybody have? It's the, the GPS that's coming up April twenty-third. Any other items? Alderman Sizmarsky?
Matt, it's, question to Matt, is also to direct staff to start letting residents know of, ahead of time, and you got an email about Central Avenue, but you know what, it's not just Central Avenue, I've got calls from bus drivers that are residents, and they're starting to see all the signs go up, road construction coming up, they have no, no idea what's going on. If there's a possibility that staff can make room in the, in the flyer we hand out every year, the resident flyer newsletter, to you, that you can post something in there, or give them a map of what's gonna happen?
Yeah, with, with those, with those two projects in particular, the, the first one, the Central Avenue one, was not our intent to close the road, but it happened by chance when, when they put shovel in the ground, and they found out that they had to be more in the road than they actually thought they would. And the second one, with the, the other road construction project, is the Addison Road, Wooddale Road pedestrian improvement project, that is, was a moving target. We did not know when they were gonna actually start, when the, when the magazine or the newsletter went out, so, and it was really hard to pinpoint the areas, like for the Ward One project that we're doing, that's starting next week, we could, we could pinpoint that area and know, and we direct mail to those people. These projects, we pretty much have to direct, we'd have to mail out to everybody in town. There was really no option for those, so.
Yeah, I'm not really going after stuff like that, but stuff that we know is scheduled, because I live in the area that is affected by the Central Avenue, and I can agree and wholeheartedly agree with that lady. There's backup, two miles long down Central, and people don't know where to go. They're, they're used to going a certain way, now they're, they don't live in our area, I understand that, but-
Yeah.
At least we give them an alternate route or a heads up on scheduled projects, they just start going the opposite ways.
Yeah, I agree with you as well, and, and, and like even today, I went down there and the road was back open again when they said it was gonna be closed for another two or three days. So, it, you know, it is kind of a moving target. We try to give people as much information as we can. And just for all residents that are, are home watching, if you do call Public Works and you do get voicemail, leave your name and your phone number, please, so we can call you back and give you your information immediately, and not, just leave a voicemail message, please, let us know, and we will get back to you as soon as we can with the correct information immediately.
Alderman Jacob?
In reference to what Alderman Sizmarsky was saying, besides putting in the newsletter, would there be any way to have, like, a number that people could call if they have, you know, where they could listen to what's going on? And I don't know if we've ever done that for big road projects.
If you just call the Public Works Department, we will tell you whatever project you want to know about.
Okay.
Got a bunch of them going on.
Mayor?
Matt, I know, for like the Tollway stuff, don't we have like, people can sign up for an e-blast or anything? Could we do something similar for neighborhood projects? But people would have to sign up, if they don't sign up, naturally, they get no email.
Yeah, I think the easiest thing, the easiest thing to do is just to call Public Works, and we will give you the information. So, any other suggestions, we'd be more than willing to entertain those, but the easiest thing is just call Public Works, and we will get you the information.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
You can always narrowly down to the reverse nine-one-one, that's, that's all purpose of why we installed that. I mean, like today, we will fight people on the creek.
Yeah, and for, and for residential, you know, residential projects, we do utilize that, but when we have these long, you know, ranging projects that include a whole ward or two or three wards, it's not, it's not easy, easy to do that.
Any more? Want to make a motion to adjourn?
The move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? One opposed. We are adjourned.